Evening. It's Wednesday, October 15th. This is Monroe Township's Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America, the public for which it stands.
Ms. Allen?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Here.
Ms. Aziz?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePain?
Here.
Dr. Peck?
Here.
Mr. Piero?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Sharma?
Here.
Mr. Tufano?
Here.
Mr. Zeichner? We have a quorum. In accordance with provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published and electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted October 25th, 2024, and October 8th, 2025, at all schools, on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of New Municipality.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
You're welcome.
Mr. Weiss would like to make an announcement?
Thank you, Mrs. DePain. Good evening, board members. This evening, we're going to be going into executive session to discuss personnel and litigation matters related to Dr. Chanley. As a result of the multiple conflicts that we have with regard, I'm sorry, conflicts between six board members and Dr. Chanley, it's necessary to invoke the doctrine of necessity to allow for that conversation to occur. So what I'm going to do right now is read a resolution, like I did at the last meeting, to invoke the doctrine of necessity. So if you'll just bear with me, once I'm finished reading the motion, I'd like to know if there's a first and a second to approve it. So here goes. Whereas Dr. Shari Chanley serves in the capacity of superintendent for the 2025-2026 school year, and whereas the Board must consider certain personnel and litigation-related matters concerning Dr. Chanley's employment, and whereas upon review of the various conflicts of interest of the current board members, it has been determined that six of the board members have conflicts of interest pursuant to the New Jersey School Ethics Act, and whereas pursuant to Policy 0163, when a quorum of the Board has conflicted interests, the doctrine of necessity may be invoked in order to allow conflicted board members to participate and vote only when the Board of Education has fewer non-conflicted board members than are required pursuant to the statute to take action. And whereas when invoking the doctrine of necessity, the Board shall state publicly that it is invoking the doctrine of necessity with the reasons for doing so in the specific nature of the conflicts of interest. And whereas the Board policy further provides that it shall read the resolution invoking the doctrine of necessity at a regularly scheduled public meeting, such as this one, post the notice of the resolution for 30 days, and provide the School Ethics Commission with a copy of the resolution. And whereas the School Ethics Act NJSA 18A:12-21 was enacted by the New Jersey State Legislature to ensure and preserve public confidence in school board members and school administrators, and to provide specific ethical standards to guide their conduct. And whereas the School Ethics Commission has provided guidance regarding the invocation of the doctrine of necessity when a quorum of the Board is not available because members of the Board have conflicts of interest on a matter required, discussed, and voted on. Whereas the Board intends to have discussions concerning Dr. Chanley, whereas members of the Board have conflicts of interest that would prevent their participation in and vote on matters related to Dr. Chanley are as follows. Carmen Alvarez, Gail DePain, Peter Piero, Usha Sharma, and Charles Zeichner are involved in litigation with Dr. Chanley. Kate Ratner's husband, David, is a teacher employed by the Board. Whereas as a result of the foregoing, the Board does not have a quorum to discuss, consider, and vote on matters related to the superintendent's employment and related litigation, and the Board's counsel and the Board have determined that it is necessary to invoke the doctrine of necessity. Now therefore be it resolved that the above paragraphs are hereby incorporated by reference, and be it further resolved that the doctrine of necessity is hereby invoked with respect to the Board's deliberation of and any public votes related to Dr. Chanley's employment and litigation, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution, having been read at a public meeting of the Board on October 16th, 2025, be posted, I'm sorry, 15th, be posted in accordance with the Board's standard procedures for not less than 30 days, and that the Board Secretary, Ms. Allen, reflect the same in the minutes of the meeting, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be provided to the School Ethics Commission. Is there a first and a second?
There a second? Mr. Zeichner? Well, any questions or discussions about what Mr. Weiss just presented?
Can I ask a question, just for my understanding? So, from whatever I understand of the doctrine, it's being invoked for voting, but we are going to be doing a lot of discussions. Is that okay to do?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And we may actually do some voting with respect, in particular, to a bill related to litigation.
Right, but there's a lot of other discussions based on the litigations or whatever the situation is currently.
Yeah, and so the reason why we're invoking it, the umbrella that we're putting this under is related to Dr. Chanley's employment and litigation related to Dr. Chanley.
And it's okay to discuss as, you know, with the conflicted members because you invoked the doctrine?
Correct. And just to be clear, so that there's no question for the public, when we go into closed session, the Board will not be taking any action. And by action, I mean the Board will not be taking any votes in executive session. If the Board is going to vote on anything related to executive session, and Dr. Chanley in particular, it will all be done out here after executive session. So I just want the public and the Board members to understand that we are not taking any formal action in the executive session room. I hope that answered your question?
It does. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, Ms. Allen?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Excuse me. Ms. Bora? Dr. Peck? Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
I'm going to recuse.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
No.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
We, okay, motion passes.
Closed session resolution. Whereas the Senator Byron Mbak, Byer Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6, the Act provides that the Monroe Township Board of Education may hold an executive session from which the public is excluded to discuss matters that are confidential or are one of the nine subject matters listed, Section 12B of the Act. And whereas that the Board hereby declares that its discussion of the following subject or subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest is disclosure in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the Board shall go into executive session to discuss the following items. Additional items may be determined and announced as needed. Number one, pending or anticipated litigation in matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. Number two, matters involving employees and terms of their employment and contract. And number three, HIB investigation involving student or students. Be it further resolved that said discussion may be disclosed to the public when reasons for discussing and acting upon it in closed session no longer exist. Action may be taken on any of the items stated above. Is there any discussion regarding that?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We'll be going into closed session now until 7:15. Thank you. Okay, we're back. Welcome, everyone that's here now. Before we go into business, I'm going to, what was the word you said? Because of one of, huh? I'm going to be mindful of someone's time who's in the audience. Ms. Pat Swalje, I'd like you to come up now and please give your report. Because I know she had, was coming here at a time that she was trying to fit into her evening, so I'm going to have her speak.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Patricia Swalje, and I live at 586A Madison Drive in Clearbrook. And I'm here today representing the Monroe Education Foundation and to give an update on the efforts of the foundation to inspire lifelong learning. Some in the audience may not realize that the Monroe Education Foundation was actually formed in 1995. Is that, am I too close to the mic? We are a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). Unfortunately, because of COVID and illness, the Monroe Education Foundation was not functioning, and we revived it in May of 2024. It was through the generosity of our community and local businesses that the foundation is able to provide funds for innovative curriculum, creative programs, professional development, shaping brighter futures for the students of the Monroe Township School District. The all-volunteer Monroe Education Foundation Board has accomplished the following over the past year. The education foundation has funded SAT prep courses. In December of 2024, we handed out grants to eight teachers for their school projects. We hosted a fundraiser comedy night at the Hyatt in Princeton. Five scholarships for graduating seniors were provided for character. And a world-class musician, the renowned Jerry Walden, who is Harry Connick Jr.'s saxophonist, he was hired to conduct a series of master classes for our middle and high school jazz bands. The Monroe Education Foundation put together business studies students with local business owners. Some of these business owners were alumni of the Monroe Township High School. The students were able to receive some really good insight on business community. Monroe Education Foundation ran a book fair at the Barnes &amp; Noble in Freehold, and we had a day at Romeo's Restaurant in Jamesburg, for which we received a percentage of their receipts. Representatives and volunteers of the Monroe Education Foundation Board attended all of the back-to-school nights, and we will be in attendance at the Monroe Township Oktoberfest, letting the public know about our education foundation, that we have been in Monroe since 1995, and our mission. This past October the 5th, the Monroe Education Foundation, with the help of our volunteers, held a Tricky Tray Raffle at the high school. This event was very successful and attended by about 220 people, and it will enable the Monroe Education Foundation to continue its mission, providing innovative curriculum and programs for students and teachers. On behalf of the Monroe, of the Board of the Monroe Education Foundation, I would like to thank the Board of Education, District Administration, including Dr. Adam Lehman, Zach Merolda, and Jerry Tagg, school administrators, the Monroe Township Education Association, teachers, staff, and local businesses for their support in the efforts of the Monroe Education Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have to say, I attended on October 5th, and I had about eight people at my table. Unfortunately, I did not win a thing, so I'll be going next year to see if I can recoup, but the donation is well worth it. Thank you very much.
Ms. DePain, just for the Tricky Tray, would it be possible to share? Because I know it was very successful.
Yes, please. You were there, yes.
Um, not like, I didn't mean, it was a fantastic fundraiser. I just meant if we, I don't know if you have the total amount. I know that it was a significant amount that was raised, so I just thought it would be nice to share the amount raised at the event.
Well, we've really been trying through a lot of little fundraisers to really keep our coffers up so we can continue with a lot of programming and grants that we're providing to the teachers. We will be given the final amount of money that we raised, but I have to say that the Tricky Tray Raffle was the most amount of money. It took us many, many months of putting it together, but we did raise a significant amount of money, so we are very pleased and happy about that. We have a couple of other fundraisers that we hope will be just as lucrative so we can really continue. Our fellow communities around us, East Brunswick, South Brunswick, they all have education foundations, so we're really trying to get the Monroe Education Foundation out there and what we do, we provide the programming for the schools, the teachers, that is not covered by the Board of Education budget or, and can't be, really.
Ms. DePain, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
I want to start by thanking you and the entire team. It's almost like a rebirth in the last three years, the work that I have seen. When my kids were little, MEF was doing great work, and then I know COVID, and there was some leadership challenges, but we really are benefiting from all your hard work. My question is, do, besides the eight schools in Monroe, does MEF support any other education initiatives in Monroe? Or is it just the Monroe Township School District that benefits from your fundraising?
We really concentrate on the Monroe Township Schools. We also have that grant program every year where we take applications for different grants. We're assisted in that by some of the, Dr. Lehman looks those over, and one of the teachers also helps us in those selections. But our mission is really focusing on Monroe.
Thank you. And the reason I ask that is because I want the community members to know that when they support you, they are indirectly supporting the schools. Do more and more, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to continue on with the agenda. Approval of the minutes. Public Board of Education meeting, September 17th, 2025. Motion?
Motion.
Second? Roll call, please, Ms. Allen. Would you rather I did both at the same time? There's only two? No? Okay, go ahead. Just trying to help out.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Peck? Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano? Mr. Zeichner? Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And also approval of the minutes of the closed session meeting, September 17th, 2025. Ms. Allen?
Yes. Ms. Al-
I'm sorry?
Second.
Motion?
I'll second, yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion on this that you received? Okay.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck? Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Uh, yes, but recused due to conflicts on the portion where conflict exists.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
This evening, our two wonderful students are here with us tonight, so we're going to give them our undivided attention while they read their reports.
Hi, good evening, everyone. We're going to be starting off with Brookside Elementary School. Brookside held their Week of Respect during the week of October 6th. They celebrated the Week of Respect by having five enjoyable theme days to promote kindness and inclusivity. A fire safety and professional assembly was held for grades four and five and occurred on October 8th. For the fire safety department for third grade took place on October 9th. Parent-teacher conferences will be held on October 15th and October 16th, and the evening conferences will be on October 16th. Brookside will be having their Fall Pep Rally on October 17th. The exciting school-wide event supports an environment of togetherness and school spirit. Fourth and fifth grade students at Brookside will be taking the NJSLA field test on October 27th and 28th.
Now, moving on to Barkley Brook Elementary School. Barkley Brook participated in the Week of Respect from October 6th to October 10th, promoting kindness, involvement, and the celebration of diversity through themed spirit days and daily activities. The school conducted its semi-annual bus evacuation drills, allowing students to participate in emergency procedures and learn about school spirit. Monroe Township Transportation Department. On October 7th, Barkley Brook recognized Fire Safety Month with a firefighter visit and assembly hosted by the Monroe Township Fire Department, District 3. Students viewed a fire safety video, discussed prevention strategies, and ended the event with a tour.
And now we'll be moving on to Mill Lake Elementary School. Mill Lake began the fall season with kindergarten spirit Pirate Day in late September, a day full of imagination and teamwork as students engaged in fun learning experiences. On October 8th, the school hosted Picture Day with the support of the PTO volunteers, ensuring every student looked their best. Students practiced safety procedures during bus evacuation drills, showing responsibility and calm cooperation. During Spirit Week, Mill Lake celebrated the Week of Respect by embracing uniqueness and diversity through themed days such as Hats Off to Kindness, Pajama Day, and Dress Like a Superhero Day. The PTO hosted the annual pumpkin patch on October 10th, where students selected their own pumpkins and created special fall memories. Parent-teacher conferences were held this week, and on October 23rd, the school will host Mill Lake Game Night, a family-oriented evening of games and community connection. The month will close with an SEL assembly focused on self-management, encouraging students to build social and emotional skills. Mill Lake will end October with its traditional Halloween parades, themed fairy tales, Dreams Do Come True, featuring two student parades through the school grounds.
Now, moving on to Woodland School. The school counselor, Jamie Newcomb,
Could you speak into the microphone?
Oh, sorry. The school counselor, Jamie Newcomb, coordinated Respect Spirit Week, promoting a positive, inclusive, and safe school environment. Administration, security staff, and bus drivers led bus evacuation drills to ensure students participate proper safety procedures. Club code STEM after-school and zero-period programs begin successfully and are progressing well. The Unified/Pals team organized a fundraiser for National Blindness Awareness Month, encouraging students to donate $1 and wear blue. Proceeds benefited the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. The Woodland Mill Lake PTO hosted a pumpkin patch event in the school courtyard, allowing students to enjoy choosing their own pumpkins. Fall parent-teacher conferences took place on October 15th, which is today, and will take place tomorrow, the 16th, fostering connections between families and staff in recognition of Fire Prevention Month. Monroe Township Fire District 1 will conduct a fire safety assembly on October 17th, teaching students about fire prevention and home safety.
And now we'll move on to Applegarth Elementary School. Applegarth celebrated the Week of Respect from October 6th to 10th, emphasizing respect through themed dress-up days and classroom activities, including poster projects. Bus evacuation drills were held at Oak Tree Elementary School on October 9th, reinforcing safe practices and preparedness. On October 10th, students attended an engaging water cycle assembly presented by the Grand Faloons. Of extracurricular programs such as Code Zero, Club Code, chorus, and band began their sessions this month. Parent-teacher conferences were conducted from October 15th, which is today, through the 17th, including evening conferences on October 16th. The Principal's Book Club begins on October 23rd, featuring a discussion of Mrs. Crispy and the Rats of Nymph. The PTA will host an annual trunk-or-treat event on Friday, October 24th, offering families a fun and safe Halloween experience. From October 27th to the 30th, the school will conduct NJSLA field testing for both fourth and fifth grades.
Oak Tree celebrated the Week of Respect from October 6th to October 10th with themed days such as Everyone Counts Day, where students wore sports jerseys, and Respect Rocks, where they dressed as rock stars. Parent-teacher conferences take place today and will continue to take place tomorrow as well. The school is holding its first Falcon Way Prep Rally on October 17th, bringing students and staff together to celebrate teamwork and school spirit. October also recognized as Fire Safety Month, during which the local fire department visited to conduct educational presentations. First Grade is hosting its annual Firsties Fall Festival, combining fun and learning. The PTA organized the annual trunk-or-treat event on October 24th, transforming the parking lot to a festive Halloween celebration. And the month concluded with Halloween parties and classroom parties on October 31st Halloween.
And now we'll be moving on to our middle school. On September 17th, 16 students participated in a field trip as part of the High School History Happened Here program, led by eighth-grade social studies teacher Christine Visaki. Students conducted independent research on Monroe Township's local history, connecting it to the ideals of the Declaration of Independence. The trip included an advanced screening of Ken Burns's documentary, The American Revolution, and a visit to Newark Museum of Arts-related exhibits. The sixth-grade Halloween dance is scheduled for October 24th, providing an opportunity for students to socialize. The school announced its September Students of the Month: Ryan Weltman of sixth grade, Julia Cullen of seventh grade, and Elia, Eliana of eighth grade. These students will be recognized at a breakfast in December. Through the efforts of physical education teacher Misty Drake, Monroe Township's Middle School hosted a Mama Mayor Breast Cancer fundraiser sale from October 6th to October 10th. The school is also recognized by the American Heart Association for leading the nation in the American Heart Challenge, also coordinated by Ms. Drake.
Now, moving on to the Monroe Township High School. Underclassmen of Monroe Township High School had NJSLA field testing on September 27th and September 29th in the high school. On October 14th was the class of 2026's Senior Sunrise. Despite the rainy weather, they still continued in the high school gym, and students enjoyed.
Thank you very much for your updated and detailed reports that you present every week. We really appreciate it. Next, we have committee reports. Anybody want to go first? Ms. Bora?
I have two committees. I'm going to start with the Finance Committee. The committee met on October 8th. We reviewed the bill list for August, which at the time of the committee meeting was $5,024,000. An addendum was expected. Today, we are looking at an addendum of over $11 million. The committee then reviewed the attorney fees for the months of July, which was a total of $11,171. And the Oprah fees in this bill amounted to 44% of the attorney invoice, totaling to $4,970. Ms. Allen reverted on the committee's ask last month to ask a few vendors in the Oprah management space for a proposal. She shared that three companies contacted JustFoyer, of the three companies contacted, JustFoyer and Next Request reverted with a demo and price code for what would be needed by our school district. She detailed all the features of both tools, and I would request community members to see the meeting, to see all, hear the, hear the features in detail. But the key differentiators were cost, with JustFoyer coming out cheaper, and the fact that Next Request was unable to pull requests from Oprah Machine. JustFoyer would have one public portal for the community members to submit their requests and would also pull in requests from Oprah Machine. They would configure a custom setup for us and give live training, dedicated customer success managers through the term of our contract. And we would have a cloud-based system with unlimited users, and it would help automate intake, redaction, task assignments, reminders, invoice tracking, and much more, with all the human oversight at all points. With over $15,000 spent in the last two months on Oprah attorney fees, the committee strongly feels at a cost of $8,250 annually, we would see long-term process and financial benefits. It should be duly noted that no system can help us avoid attorney intervention when needed, but it would help us significantly reduce the dependence and improve our Oprah fulfillment timelines. Committee recommends that we try this tool for the school year, and it is on the agenda for approval tonight. I'm not going to speak to the board goals because we have a separate discussion. Yes, Ms. Ratner?
Yes, please. So, I did not get a chance to review the meetings like I normally do, so I definitely will do that to learn more about the features, but I know you kind of highlighted that it's not a substitute for an attorney looking them over. Have we heard from other districts that have utilized this software?
Yes, so JustFoyer is used, one of the first people to recommend this was the Cherry Hill Board President. And they did let us know that while it has really streamlined their process, they still do need to go to the attorney. And we were told by Mr. Weiss, by Dr. Lehman, also by Ms. Allen, that we're not looking to avoid using the attorney completely, but we are looking to reduce our dependence. So, these are tools that are being used by more and more districts, and there is general level of redaction, and they also learn from the previous Oprah requests. So, it's AI-based, so they do learn from previous requests. So, and oversight is definitely less time-consuming than actually having to do everything. So, even from our human resource perspective, right, the time that our Oprah secretary is putting into this, there are still human errors. There is still the timeline of completion. I think everything seemed, it's definitely worth trying for, yeah.
And then, just my other question, and I don't want to get too specific because it could potentially touch personnel, but we do have that designated person who handles, you know, at first it was like, that was the sole purpose of that position, and then it was expanded upon. But by starting this for the year, is, you know, assuming like the goal of this is to sort of reduce that person's workload regarding Oprah requests, sort of reduce that person's workload regarding Oprah requests, is that going to be potentially a cost savings, or will other responsibilities sort of be added to make up for that?
If I can speak to my experience watching this process, because the Oprah Secretary was also handling registrations, there were times of the years when the registration work was so much that we were, our dependence on attorney was increasing. And, right, there will be the cost savings because there will be time. But, once we start to use it and we see how much time-saving there is, I am sure that's a future conversation on reassignment of tasks, or the human oversight will be needed, definitely for the first, at least six months, and that would be the role of the current Oprah Secretary, is what my understanding is. Yes?
Yes. Years ago, Oprah was 100% handled by the former business administrator who submitted, who handled them and then gave them to the attorney for review. It was all handled like that. And then, an Oprah Secretary was hired, and this Oprah Secretary reported to Dr. Shanley, and now we're getting this new software. And I was wondering, in most other districts, I believe that business administrator handles, you know, the Oprah requests and 100%. So, do you know if other districts that use this software also have an Oprah Secretary?
I don't, but that would be a future conversation. Once we get on this software, it could be a future conversation. I think we've gone in phases, and we're getting to a new, we might get to a new normal.
Yes.
But at this point, I don't know what Cherry Hill is using in terms of an Oprah Secretary. I'm not sure.
I do think, Justin, I think Mr. Weiss might have spoken on it last month. Our district tends to have a significantly higher number of Oprah requests. Like, if you look on Oprah Machine, I think, like, this is municipalities, all agencies of the state, we're like number seven or eight in the number of Oprah requests throughout the state on that website, and then we have ones that are not done through the website. So, I, obviously, we always want to try to save as much as we can, but I think that might be a part of it. I believe that Mr. Weiss spoke on it last month. Am I imagining?
No, I definitely indicated that, you know, of all the boards that I handle, your board has probably the highest number of Oprah requests.
And on the NJSPA forum that we were having the discussion, there were board members that seemed to indicate the same, that, well, Monroe, so Monroe operates on a whole other level. I feel like, as a committee and as a recommendation that we're making, this is the path forward. For us, we have been seeing significantly high bills, and we cannot continue that, down that path. We have to find a way, find a solution, and the cost right now is nominal enough for us to take that for the year, take it on for a year, and then redetermine next year around this time, no, next year in June. Hopefully, Ms. Allen can help us revisit this and see the value that this tool brought in, and how, or whether or not we should be continuing in July.
And can I interject? I know, Ms. Allen, you can correct me, but it was also stated that they would come in and train our personnel who are doing it right now, and that was part of the cost. And if you listen to the meeting, Ms. Allen gave a very detailed report of this company and what they can do for us, and it was really tremendous help for this district. And we thought, I know the, I think it was the pre-finance meeting that we talked about at the most?
It was pre-finance, and then again in finance.
Finance, that it was really helpful for us right now with the situations that we have here, so.
And you would notice on the agenda that, I mentioned $8,250, that's the yearly fees.
That's it.
But, we are, it's prorated because we're going to start now, so it's going to be $5,000 something up until June.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions concerning this? Anybody else want to make their committee report? You're going to finish your other one?
Can I finish curriculum?
Sure.
Curriculum committee met on October 7th. We received an update from Dr. Sernaski and Ms. Sernaski and Mr. Berandica on a new initiative for mental health for our athletes. As a part of this initiative, they will give access to an app called Athlete Talk to all winter athletes, which will enable the school counselors to become proactive in their approach to tackling mental health and substance abuse within athletes that may be going through difficult times due to injuries or simply demanding nature of the high school sport. This initiative and app rollout is grand-funded and comes at a small trial cost. The committee wholeheartedly backed this initiative, and that would only strengthen the MTHS athletics. Next, Mr. Maralda presented an update on the summer programming for high school. This summer, we offered honors geometry and geometry enrichment classes to students that wish to advance a level in math without doubling up during the school year. This was the first time we offered this 120-hour, five-week class. Two staff members ran these five hours a day classes, filled to capacity, and the outcome was excellent, with a majority of students being able to advance. We charged much less than our neighboring towns for this pilot, $17.50 per student, and had better outcome than students taking these enrichment classes outside. It was a resounding success. The revenue from this enrichment program fed the operations of the remediation program, which went virtual this year. As a result of this change, we had 76 students take remediation as compared to the just seven last year. We offered remediation services for 17 courses, which was a huge improvement over previous years. The content was moderated real-time by our staff, and the students could come in person for help once a week for the virtual course material. The committee was then given an excellent report on the progress of NTSS, Multi-Tier System of Support Services, and the progress we have made as a district in this in the past three years. After a detailed explanation on the collaborative data-driven approach on intervention and the various grant-funded tools being used daily, the committee heard the success stories across the district highlighting the heightened data culture amongst educators, allowing for fact-based dialogues with supervisors and parents. The board has seen firsthand in the recent years the financial impact of these methods in timely intervention resulting in reduced classification and reduction in our out-of-district placements. The MTSD staff has been one of the most successful districts in its adoption of the state-mandated title-funded program. Three curriculum documents were presented for discussion: biology, grade-one math, and honors finance, which could soon become a dual-credit course. The coming, I'm going to leave out the board goals, but I do want to take a second to instill Dr. Lehman's thunder, because you've got a lot of thunder today. I want to share that the Project Lead the Way Initiative, which we have really well-integrated into our curriculum, does their yearly awards, and this year, two of our staff members, Mrs. Vanita Gaurishankar, was recognized as one of the 15 national outstanding teachers in engineering. I think this is her second year winning it, and I am even more thrilled to share that Mr. Maralda is one of the nine outstanding administrators in the country for the PLTW program. So, this puts Monroe on the map big time. Congratulations to the entire staff involved in the PLTW project and to your team, Ms. Dr. Lehman. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bora. Anybody have any que, oh, Ms. Ratner?
I just had a quick question regarding the enrichment from the summer, because I was, I'm thrilled it was a success. Do you know, were the classes full, like, at capacity for enrollment, or was there, was there a waiting list or anything like that?
They were at capacity, and everyone who wanted to take the course was able to take the course.
Okay. And then, I know that you guys sort of talked about expansion for next summer. Was this summer only open to Monroe students, or was it open to other people? I guess because we were at capacity, but everyone was able to, so I wasn't sure if we were able to open it.
This specific program was Monroe-specific.
Okay.
As we look into the future, that is certainly something we can open our eyes to as we grow the program, just like we did with the elementary enrichment.
All right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Anyone else have a report? Ms. Ratner?
I'm going to do the Legislative Advocacy Committee first, Community Engagement. The committee met on October 7th. Board of Education members, President, were myself, Mrs. Zeez, Ms. DePain, Dr. Pack, and Ms. Sharma. The district administrators in attendance were Dr. Lehman and Mr. Maralda. Our first agenda item was an update from the September New Jersey School Board Legislative Committee meeting. I won't go too much into the details here, however, we were able to share the updates from that meeting on the agenda on the public side. So, if people are interested in seeing those updates, they can see all of them from that meeting in September. There was definitely a lot on there. After this, we discussed the creation of an annual district advocacy calendar. This was something that I felt would help us sort of guide our district as a board and, you know, working in collaboration with the administration, as well as our community in our efforts in advocating for our schools. So, we reviewed that, and what I would like to do, if Ms. DePain, you're okay with it, is send that out to the rest of the board, just to see if there's any other recommendations, and then we can make that sort of an unofficial official document. After this, we reviewed our district website. There was a discussion regarding the calendar feature. Suggestions made included adding the marking period dates to the calendar so that parents are aware. It was suggested that this would go on the specific school websites, because we have different marking period dates based on our grade levels, as well as making sure that the calendar is streamlined, just so parents know where to go for each of the calendars. Because, just as a quick, you know, five-second tutorial, if you want the high school calendar right now on your phone, because you can download that, and then you're getting the updates directly, but you have to go to the high school website and then click on Add Calendar. And then, if you want the middle school calendar, you have to go to the middle school website and click on Add the Middle School Calendar. So, that's for each of the different schools. There is also, on the district homepage, a district calendar, which is sort of housing more of the district-wide events, whether it's schools being open or closed, or major events that are sort of, you know, multiple grade and school levels. Then, we had a brief update regarding topics from our County School Board Association meeting, and then we ended the meeting with a discussion regarding how to achieve the New Jersey School Board certification, as well as a discussion on what our board goal should be.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Ratner? Mr. Piero, you had your hand up. I'm going to come back to you.
Is she done?
I have another question.
Oh, go ahead.
No.
You can finish.
All right. This one's short. Citizens Advisory Committee also met on October 7th. Board members were myself, Ms. Alvarez, Ms. Zeez, and Ms. DePain. And the district administrators were Dr. Lehman and Mr. Maralda. We also had many of our community members that are on our Citizens Advisory Committee present for the meeting, which was really nice. Our focus for the, most of the meeting was an extensive discussion regarding our advocacy letter, and so we discussed sort of what the intent of the letter should be, whether we wanted to focus heavily on the funding formula, still focus more on just full-day kindergarten, or if we wanted to include any other legislative matters, such as, you know, the November spending question or things like that. There were, you know, a lot of suggestions made, like, one was that we need to incorporate specific costs for full-day kindergarten, because that's something that our legislators have asked for before, while understanding, you know, from the administrative side that it's challenging to give those costs, because we don't really know what we need until we get to those points. So, that was something that was discussed, and we tasked our committee members just with sending back a response with any suggestions that they have, and our goal is to have this finalized at our next meeting, so that way we are able to start signing them out while the legislators are in lame duck section before we get to January, and it's a whole new group of people.
Thank you, Ms. Ratner. Any questions for Ms. Ratner? Yes?
Just a comment, Ms. DePain, to the point about not stopping the conversation for funding. I feel like we can never stop that conversation. Full-day kindergarten with the mandate will become a reality sooner than later. It's coming latest, you know, in the next three years, it's going to be here. Our funding, we've been fighting for 15 years, and I don't know how long we'll fight. The other schools are in the process of losing it, we never got it. So, I think we cannot stop that conversation, so that should definitely be part of our letter. Thank you.
Definitely. Mr. Piero?
The Building, Grounds, and Transportation Committee met on October 8, 2025. Present was myself, President DePain, Ms. Bora, Ms. Ratner, Dr. Lehman, Mr. Tag, Ms. Martyr, and Mr. Maralda. First, we'll talk about the Applegarth Rye Graham Projects, the Ruhr Projects Electric Services, HVAC update. The committee reviewed a change order for the additional structural reinforcement of the 1983 gym roof. Administration noted that the funds are available for this work in the project allowance, and the committee agreed to endorse processing the change order at this meeting. The good news was reported to us that we finally received delivery of the electronic switch gear we've been waiting for, which puts this project back on track for a potential reoccupancy of staff and students. We're hoping, following the Teachers' Convention in November, we're hoping by then we may be able to get this work completed and get the kids back in the school. The progress will be tracked closely, and any updates will be provided in the coming weeks, and the HVAC work is progressing on the project. They were able to do a little more than expected, because the way it works is, once we reoccupy the school, any contractors that come there will come back and ship after the students leave the school. Since we had a delay in the switch gear, the HVAC guys have been there every day, working to try to get this completed. The ESOP project update, committee members reviewed a weekly update report provided by Honeywell, which highlights completion status of the LED lighting, upgrade projects, as well as confirming delivery of the boilers for the middle school and Barclaybrook School replacement. Construction of the boiler replaced at the middle school is underway, and the work at Barclaybrook will follow in the coming weeks. Solar construction under ESOP is still going through the regulatory approval from the state and with the power company. We also, Mr. Tag gave us our annual comprehensive maintenance plan, which is required by the state, with projects that we have to show the state that we need for each school that may need an upgrade to something at that school. Full-day kindergarten design study. So, the committee reviewed a proposal from Architect on Record, DI Group Architecture. Administration confirmed that the $500,000 funding provided by the state for full-day kindergarten program can be used for us to help finance this work for the study. We will recommend this to the full board tonight to proceed with this approval. Transportation. Ms. Martyr advised us that she's still going over some bus routes. Some people still have inquired about their bus routes, but most of them, she's already gotten back to the people. We do have, we had a little bit of an influx with drivers that were out, so unfortunately, she said we had to go back to doing some double runs, but we're hoping that doesn't last long. And the bus app, so they're also working on the bus app to get the pilot program done, so hopefully that'll start in the near future. They're going to pick out what school or buses to use, and then, once we get the study done, we'll take it from there, they'll give us a report on how it works.
Thank you, Mr. Piero. Any questions for Mr. Piero?
Mr. Lehman might want to add some stuff.
Dr. Lehman, you want to?
Can I add a little bit more on Applegarth?
Yes, please.
So, the switch gears arrived, and the power is now totally cut at Applegarth. That was the, that is the linchpin, that is the key piece that we've been waiting on. So, we recently sent out a message to the Applegarth parents that previously you could call the Applegarth number, and it would forward you to the Applegarth office in the middle school. Now that the power is out, and it's literally offline, except for we, they're running a generator to maintain the fire systems, all calls go directly to the middle school, and we're in the process of trying to, basically in a cloud base, because our phone is voice-over internet, have those calls back to being rerouted to, from Applegarth to the middle school. Right now, the calls, if you call Applegarth, it goes to central office, and we've been transferring people to the middle school. So, that's the only kind of change that we didn't actually expect. It was just a technology piece, but we're kind of trying to work through that so we can get things back in line. But we did send notification on that, and other than that, like we said, powering off in the electrical piece is the key piece we've been waiting on. Everything else, as Mr. Tag says, is punch list items, whether it's, you know, fixing, fine-tuning the drainage, or that structural piece that was addressed. Those are things that would not have prevented us from occupying the building. Those are things that as normal things that we go through and we do the roof or whatever, we have to address and go through. So, the change order that we just, we're going to approve the funding for now is punch list type items. So, we are on track for students' last day at the middle school, October 31st, then we are gone for the November Teachers' Convention break, come back. The goal is to have everyone back at Applegarth, and we're going to monitor it day by day. You know, weather systems that just blew in the past couple days, if that distracts or pulls JCPenney off of their priority, you know, their priorities are restoring power somewhere else, you know, we can't control those variables, but the contractors been on-site and working, you know, diligently to meet the deadline for us to get back in right after break.
Ms. Ratner?
Yep. Thank you for that update. I just wanted to ask about the trailers at the middle school, because I know we had to sort of approve the use of them, and I think we're paying like a monthly amount for, is that?
is that the plans to pay through October and then, or like, are they allowing us sort of wait and see what happens? Or do we have to, like, in the event that we need to go further, pay for an extra month?
We'll pay for November, and then we'll go from there, because we, if we don't pay for November, then they can come get the trails on November 1st, and we will be transitioning materials and staff and clearing those trailers out. So November will be, you know, something that we'll pay for.
Okay. And then the only things in those trailers now are the students from Applegarth.
Yep.
So then we're able to remove them as we initially planned.
Yep.
All right.
Yep. That's the only use for them now. And then, you know, anything that's not connected to the walls belongs to the district. So desks and chairs and things like that would be either moved back to Applegarth or reallocated in different locations.
Any other questions? Before we go to the next section, I just wanted to thank all the committee chairs and all the committees that met last week. Took a little time out of their meetings to come and help produce the board goals that are here tonight. And we had a lot of input, and I think, right now, we're going to discuss the board and district goals. Dr. Lehman?
So we're putting up the board goals on the back, and the board has copies of them. So in terms of goal number one, the feedback from the committees and Ms. DePaine to support the development and implementation of the district's Portrait of a Graduate Initiative, ensuring that it reflects a shared community vision for student success and guides district policies, programs, and partnerships toward cultivating a well-rounded, future-ready learners. I think that reflects the board's role in supporting a district initiative, right? Whether it's financially, or approving programs, or things like that.
Do you want to stop at each goal and see if anybody has any questions, or you want to finish the whole thing, Dr. Lehman?
I think we go question by question.
Okay. Does anyone have any input on this first goal?
I just want to share some insight to community members as to why and why we are putting so much stress on that. It came through a workshop a year ago, and I, that session was attended by myself, Mrs. Kirby, and Dr. Chanley. And the presenter, the whole idea, and apparently it's a very popular idea, but the whole idea is, when they start in preschool and when they end in high school, they're all working towards that same portrait. So the district unites in that image of what is a Monroe student like? And it just gave such a sense of belonging, community, goals, everything for them to move up, because several times, elementaries and middle schools and high schools would have different mascots, and we've gone through that in Monroe as well, that we've had different mascots. We now have the Falcon everywhere. But I think it was about moving beyond the Falcon to actually defining what is that Monroe's, and that's what is the goal. What is that portrait of a thriving Monroe student? And then we align, as Dr. Lehman and Mr. Maralda put it beautifully, once we have that vision, then we align everything that we do, all of our work, to that vision. And we teach the student to that portrait and not to a test. So we're not striving to accomplish, you know, a score in a test, but we are striving to accomplish that portrait for every student. And it's holistic. It's that whole student concept. So that was the idea here. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Ratner?
I just wanted to ask, from last year, I think we had also put how we would accomplish the goals on that. I think this one sort of, kind of speaks for itself, but I didn't know if that's something we wanted to include, or, you know, just sort of internalize on our own how for each of the goals we are going to accomplish them.
Do you want to speak to Dr. Lehman about the community input aspect of it?
Yeah, I think that was a general question about all the goals that you're speaking towards, as opposed to, I mean, there's definitely a process that we would go through specifically to Portrait of a Graduate. But in terms of the how-to relative to goals, I mean, that's something that you guys could engage in within the committees, you know, and in collaboration with us, because we will be bringing things related to a lot of these. And some of these are things that you bring to the table as well. So I think it's, you know, that's a collaborative piece within the committee level. So goal number two, strengthen advocacy efforts through active collaboration with parent organizations, civic groups, and local stakeholders to enhance outreach and mobilize community support for legislation that benefits the district and its students.
Anybody have any questions on that discussion? Good. We'll move on.
Goal number three, this is related to the policy audit that we received over the summer. Review and update district policies as needed following the results of the Monroe Township School District Policy Wellness Check. And as we've found so far, a lot of it is aligning the two different companies with the different views, but we certainly have policies that we can go back minimally, once we get through the kind of cross-checking, that we should revisit. Some of them are from, you know, 15 years ago, that they probably don't have a significant update, otherwise we would have gone through them already. Our policy company, our policy attorneys kind of send those updates to us regularly, but it's worth another touch with another look. And I think this is a goal for that committee.
So I did have a question on this, and maybe it's also to the policy chair. So our agenda is pretty much driven by what's coming to us most of the time, except when we have conversations and we bring those policy out. This goal seems to, because of the wellness check, that seems to have really increased the scope of that work. How, and committee times are so limited. So are you going to have the administration start to go through it and then see things up to the committee, or what, how are we, this is, just trying to say, this is a really big goal, right?
So the administration, oh, I'm sorry.
You go for it.
Okay. Has created a schedule, month by month, of which policies we're going to be reviewing and going over. And Dr. Lehman and Rashima, you have been working very hard to cross-check the wellness checks. So we do have a schedule, and then if we get any Strauss S.M.A. updates along the way, those will be added to the agenda as needed.
Thank you. That's right.
So we're kind of taking them in chunks. So this first month, we cross-checked policies that were identified as missing from school boards, but we found, with the exception of one that is from 1992, that we have, just from 1992, they're just a cross, you know, we have them through Strauss S.M.A., they're just embedded in other policies, whereas school boards has it as standalone or something else, called something else. The next piece we're going to take a look at is regulations, and then we'll begin looking at some of the older policies for update. And the older policy piece is going to take us a significant amount of time. That may trickle into another year, especially not knowing what some of our policy updates from Strauss S.M.A. or alerts are going to come through. Sometimes that is an entire meeting in itself.
And there's no harm in, you know, continuing this goal in the future years.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
And then, goal number four, support the fiscal planning and capital improvements necessary to implement and sustain a high-quality full-day kindergarten program across the Monroe Township School District. And that's the fiscal capital support for full-day kindergarten.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone have any questions, comments about the board goals? I think they're good, right to the point. And I'd like to thank you again for all your commentary and additions to our board goals. Dr. Lehman, are you going to do? That's during your report. Okay. Next is our public forum on agenda items only. If you'd like to speak on anything that's on our agenda, please come up and state your name and your address, and you have four minutes to speak. Anyone?
Bob Valentine, 68 Union Valley Road. Just a couple of quick comments. I have to go back and watch the financial, your initiative sounds like a really good initiative. I don't know if you can do this. I know it's a very sensitive area, but one is I would be interested to see at some point if you can do it, is just, even if it's just the dollar, the total dollars that the district has had to spend both on external resources and internal resources on these open public records requests, you know? I would like to see, like, going back three years. I think you've talked about it quite a bit. You've cited it as a burden both financially and a burden on your staff. I think the community would be well-served to understand, if they could see actual dollars and understand what the real impact of this is, I think it would be very, it might be potentially very enlightening, and really help people understand why this is such a concern of the board. Second comment, is this appropriate towards your board goals here, or do you want me to do that later? I have one.
You can do that right now, sir.
Okay. I'd just like to suggest one more goal for your consideration, or wherever you want to address it. I would like to see you take a hard look at workforce and talent management. Being at these meetings for the last four to six months, I'm very concerned about how leadership at both the schools and here in the district is being evaluated. Specifically, are all the constituencies these people are serving? Is their feedback getting into this process? Is it an inclusive process and fully reflecting the full range of all the people they're serving? And is it being done in a way that, you know, is really appropriate and capturing everything? You know, I don't, obviously I don't know anything near what you all know, but just, as little I do know coming to these meetings, it just, I have a lot of questions about what's gone on over the last four to six months. And I think talent management and talent evaluation is something that you really need to be taking a look at. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll continue on to our board agenda.
So that's my report.
Yes.
Yep.
Dr. Lehman, that's you.
So the majority of my report, the vast majority, is just going to be our annual, and I'll provide a summary of our various student data touchpoints. Everything from a little bit of HIB, some AP assessments, as well as our NJSLA data. So this is a requirement of us to share annually. So a lot of the stuff you're going to see is just a lot of numbers and charts. It's also going to be embedded in our school report card, which gets released later, actually, next calendar year is when they release the school report cards. But you'll have the same, you'll have access to all of this as well, and we'll upload this presentation. The majority of this, I will highlight some key talking points, but the theme of this builds on our curriculum committee discussion on MTSS, which is Multi-Tier System of Supports. The Multi-Tier System of Supports is the individual, individualized support and engagement of our students in the classroom. Individualized instruction, individualized interventions, individualized enrichment. That's the heart and soul of this. So where we look at numbers and we see, I would classify 99% of the data we're looking at as annual fluctuations based on this year's third grade versus last year's third grade, this year's seventh grade versus last year's seventh grade. We each know every student body comes with different strengths, whether it's athletics, academics, social interests, you know? We go through things as a community. So those are all areas that play into this. And any fluctuations we see, and it's positive and negative, I attribute to just the natural overwhelming fluctuations. The data we look at today is from last spring. We are close to six months away from it, and going back to MTSS, we've done a minimum of two of our district, they're not benchmark, but they're progress monitoring assessments. So when we look at, you know, who are these students in these percentages, we can put names to the percentages, and we already have, and we're two touchpoints, two assessments deep into supporting them or challenging them, you know, pushing them on an enrichment side, helping strengthen their weaknesses. We are six months into addressing the needs from this data. And again, both positive and negative. We see swings towards advanced proficient, we see swings towards proficient, partially proficient. And again, any of those, we've already, and we are in the process of touching those students in terms of their, supporting their academics. So to kick off the slideshow, I'm going to try and control it from here. Let's see if it works. All right. Negative. All right. So you guys can flip the slides for me. We're going to go to the first HIB slide. So this is a summary of our HIB cases last year. So we had 16 founded, 16 unfounded. We report generally who, not generally, but exactly who reports them. So we had seven staff members report the cases. We had 12 parents, and the balance would be anonymous reporting and/or student-reported. Could be self-reported, could be a colleague or a friend. On the side here in the chart, we have the breakdown of where the investigations occurred, and those are both for the founded and unfounded. And as you can see, and as you most likely expect, and annually, we have the most investigations, typically at the high school. And if we go to the next slide, we talk about distinguishing characteristics. We've noticed that a lot of, I won't say the majority, but many of our HIB investigations are centered around social media-related triggers, whether it's happening outside of school on social media, or it's something that was seen, brought to us by another student or parent. So there is a connection. In terms of the number of investigations of our distinguishing characteristics, many of our investigations have multiple distinguishing characteristics embedded in there. It could be gender and a disability in one investigation. So these numbers aren't going to add up to your total investigations. It's just a combination of all these findings. We see appearance, which is a very broad and general category, as having the most investigations associated with it. Again, that's not a surprise. Race, ethnicity, and sexual orientation are our other two most common or highest investigations. So.
Yep. I, because I think this is the last slide for HIB, so I just wanted to ask two questions. The first is, do we have the data from like year by year, knowing that like our enrollment changes as well, just how many we had in prior years?
So our HIB cases are all on our school report card. So, you know, it's posted, it's public data, so any of our founded cases are on the school report card.
Okay.
So it's a historical record going back probably 15 years of it, whenever HIB kicked in.
Okay. My other question was just regarding if people want to report HIBs. I know it's on the website.
Yep.
From my recollection, I think with the anti-bullying law, like, it's supposed to be right on that homepage. I don't know if perhaps it got moved with our transition to a new website. I was able to find it, but I also think that we just have to go in there to update it, because then once I found it through like the links.
Yep. It's embedded in our HIB page. It also can be found through this, yep, district information.
Okay.
And then we, we can take a report anyway. Call an administrator, call a teacher, come into the building. We immediately take the report. We engage whoever's reporting into, you know, coming up with a summary or a statement of what their concerns are, or what happened, and then we take it from there.
Right. I just, the information, I think, is outdated from when, because it has you listed as the coordinator.
Yep. It's something we're in the process of updating. Yep.
Right. I know it was the massive transition to the new website, so.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. The, is there data for the HIB suspensions and expulsions?
So that, so that is there because what we do is we, we report out on what kind of potential outcomes come out of HIBs, and even the unfounded ones are usually typically the code of conduct piece. So we say those are examples of what happens. Our suspensions and things are reported basically through our board agendas and things. Yep. Our next section is student assessment data. So this is where I'm going to refer to a massive pile of charts and percentages. Again, I'm going to make some general comments about what this data represents and generally on how to read it. So if you look across a row, you're looking at last year's third grade versus this year's third grade, two years ago's third grade versus last year's versus this year's. If you want to look at the same students, you would go down at a diagonal. So you would look at last year's third grade, this year's fourth grade. So when you, when you go across, you're talking about different students taking the same, a similar test, not necessarily the same test, but a similar test. When you go diagonally, you're looking at the same students taking different tests, right? So as you can imagine, there's conversations about, you know, you may take an algebra test this year and a geometry test next year, yet we compare two different subjects in your performance on that, or last year's students versus this year's students. So what we look for here are a couple things. We look for consistent performance in general, and we also look for any abnormally, any abnormalities, any significant differences, whether it's embedded in a grade or across a specific cohort of students moving through. One year, I pointed out, we had a bubble of students that was performing extremely well in language arts, and we could follow them sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and it was something that we kind of tracked through. It was not, we didn't change anything curricularly, we just saw them move through year after year and perform very, very high on the NJSLA. When we see something, and we, and again, there's nothing that is a glaring red flag for us in our look at the data right now, what we would do is we would say, who are these students? What kind of questions are they struggling on? And we would look at our curriculum and say, is the document, is the instruction sequenced in the right way? Are we hitting the topic that they may be struggling with too late in the school year or too early in the school year? And then, and how does that impact, you know, where they're, how they're scoring on the assessment? So, you know, if we look down here, generally, what you see is if it's down a little bit in, say, level five, it's up a little bit in level four. And again, that's last year's students versus this year's students. And it just demonstrates that you have students that are on the border between proficient and advanced proficient, or partially proficient and proficient. So we typically see a little wiggle year by year. And we see that in the positive, and we see that in the opposite direction. So these are language arts results, and this is a three-year snapshot, 2023 through 2025. The next slide is a similar slide that shows a three-year snapshot, and it is for mathematics. Notable, and this is something I speak to each year, the middle school is when our math kind of diverts, and we have multiple classes that are offered. So we have everything from Algebra I, Geometry, as well as Math, Grade Eight. So when we look at, and if you want to look at a total student body, you'd have to look at Grade Eight, and then Algebra I Middle School, Geometry Middle School. Those three tests combined represent your middle school students. When you start to disaggregate the students, that's when you see, they're basically sorted by their content that they're taking. We see that more traditionally in the high school as they start to pick their classes and they funnel through the, the math sequences. The next slide, we report out on how many students test, and you can see this reflects what we call a stabilization of our enrollment. Right? We're looking at, over the past few years, we see a decline, and what that is, is our elementary enrollment has stabilized. And as they move through, they're getting into the middle school, and eventually, we're within about a year or two of those smaller graduating classes moving into the high school. So for this year, we're down 100. This is tests given, so this isn't exactly enrollment, but you can, this mirrors enrollment. So we're down 119 students in terms of taking their ELA assessment, and we're down 124 students in terms of taking math assessments.
Question here. Is there a state mandate on what percentage of our students should be taking, and where do we fall on that?
So that is, that's why they collect student, how many students test. And they, they take tests relative to enrollment, and 95% is what they shoot for in terms of, and then they, they give us a rating. And that's on our school report card. It's not reported out on this year's data. They still, they haven't calculated any achievement or growth data. That'll all come out with our school report card.
Dr. Lehman, I just want to know, could parents opt out their children from taking?
No.
No, they can't.
Nope. Nope. And even back in the day when people were opting out.
Right.
It was, it was actually a test refusal, is what it was.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dr. Lehman, I just, looking at the percentages, I just, I wanted to, and I'm sure there's more of this as we go.
Yep.
But just, you know, commend our, our staff and our administration, just looking at like the exceeding percentages, like on the language arts. It looks like the, the growth from the percentages that we have in third grade to, again, like there's little exceptions here and there.
Yep.
But the growth of the students that are exceeding percentages when we get to the higher grades, it seems to gradually increase year by year as they move throughout the school system, which, you know, is definitely a testament to the work that I think, you know, our teachers and our administration are doing for our students.
Yep. And I'm going to highlight that right as I get towards the end of this, in terms of our areas of focus right now. And just a little preview, the MTSS piece, as we grew through that in the past two or three years, the origins of that focuses on our Tier Two and Tier Three. Those would be our pull-in, push-out supports with reading specialist and basic skills. That's really what people think of when they think of multi-tier system of support. Our focus this year is on, including supporting that program, the Tier Two and Tier Three, but is Tier One instruction. And that's 85% of the class. That's everyone else that's not Tier One and Tier Two. So that's every other student in the classroom. So we are focusing on instruction in the classroom for everyone else. Tier Two and Tier Three are sitting there as well, but that's where our focus is. And then we also have, and I'll just do that slide right now. The other focus we have now is with the Tier Two and Tier Three processes and decision trees that we have in place, we now have the ability to focus on some of our advanced proficient learners that we're looking for growth in. What it's very easy to do is when a student is advanced proficient, advanced proficient or even proficient, is to say, they're good to go, they're all set, they get it. But what we are, because we have the data-driven culture, which we talked about in MTSS, we are very closely looking at those students and making sure they're growing just like a student on Tier, is in a Tier Two or Tier Three intervention. So we can provide interventions, just like we do in Tier Two and Tier Three, for those learners as well. Because we want to make sure everyone is growing relative to themselves and relative to peers that perform similarly to them. So it's very easy to overlook a high-achieving student because they're high-achieving and they're good to go. And here, you can work on this assignment while I help everyone else over here. Our attention is both on our learners that need support, and now we can turn our attention to really push and support those students as well. And they, and they all fit under that MTSS. That's 85%, 15%, and then 5%.
So just, go ahead. I was going to say really quick, when we're looking at these percentages, this is the achievement and not, is it, or is achievement and growth?
No, this is achievement.
Okay.
They have not done anything with growth yet.
I had parent-teacher conferences today, and I was concerned literally about sort of what you're saying with the growth component. And so that's sort of why I feel like you're covering.
We monitor growth. We monitor growth multiple times a year, and we also do it in shorter intervals in our Tier Two and Tier Three students in MTSS. The state will look at growth annually, and they'll do that, usually it's in the springtime.
Okay.
Takes them that long to look at growth from this previous spring's test.
Right.
So that's why we have these other processes in place, because by the time they tell us that information, it's grossly outdated. Right? So we need things in place to be able to address the students that, if they're going to say they're making growth that's less than their peers, we've already been working with them for six to eight months.
Okay.
I just want to echo Ms. Ratner's thought and extend that to maths as well, and tie it to our conversation in the curriculum committee where the results are evident. The same group of students that were not meeting expectations, that percentage of students not meeting expectation over the next few grades has gone down, both in language arts and in mathematics, overwhelmingly, grade through eight, third through eight. And I know it, and in mathematics, it becomes complicated in the later stages with all the different levels of mathematics. So you can't see it so quickly on the data here. But it seems to be a pattern of where our percentage is reducing in students not meeting expectations, and our percentage is going up in students meeting the expectations, level four and five.
Yep.
So it's tying up beautifully. Thank you.
Yep.
I apologize. I meant, I saw it when I looked at ELA, but it is on both. So kudos to both math and ELA.
I want to add that, yes.
No, I appreciate that.
Yep. And you were 100% accurate in the sense of, it is an intense data-focused culture that has developed over the past couple of years, and our teachers have done a wonderful job embracing the tools they have, learning how to really use the data. And the hardest part is taking the information and knowing what to do with it, knowing what tool to pull out, what curricular resource to, to grab when a student is performing X or Y. Right? And that's the learning curve that we've been going through, and we continue to go through. So in terms of the next series of slides, this is our district data relative to the state. And what you would see and what you would expect from Monroe Township is we highly outperform the state in just about every category. And that you would expect that from the, the performance data we've seen before and historically, as well as what we expect in the future. So that next series of slides is, is just that.
And so I want to add here again that our percentages are low for the lower levels as compared to the state, as it should be, and our percentages are higher than the state average for levels of meeting and exceeding expectations.
Dr. Lehman, for the ninth grade, do we ever look at the eighth grade results from Jamesburg, knowing that they're not within like our jurisdiction, but seeing the growth that's happening from the eighth grade to ninth grade tests?
So we, when the Jamesburg students transition to us, we get all of their performance data, and we use that to, just like we use a Monroe student's data to drive instruction. Yep. And one thing we're working on is, I'll bring to Dr. Valani, is joint agreement to share the Linkit data. So we can, if both boards take action, and Linkit has a, you know, a form that we would both approve, then we can merge our data. And instead of exchanging spreadsheets, it would naturally, when your students transition over to Monroe and they become our students, then everything is naturally in our system together. So I think it's a, it's a nice piece that we'll get, we'll get moving and flowing. It, it's an important piece over the summer. The next series of slides is a breakdown by grade, and it subcategorizes it by school. And again, what we see here is what we've seen for many, many years in terms of, you know, Brookside, Mill Lake, Brookside, Woodland, having very similar data. And then you have Oak Tree and Apple Garth that have a different demographic of student, and they have a different performance data. And that's, again, something we've seen consistently. Back when they had peer scoop, peer schools identified, Brookside and Woodland were always a peer school, and Apple Garth was never considered a peer. And that just has to do with the criteria in which they develop peer schools, and it's everything from demographic data to SES data, the state would, would not even include one of our own district schools as another peer, peer school, which is interesting, because they used to do peer school comparisons. They used to pick 30 schools like your schools, so you could see, see the performance data.
When they're categorized as Title I schools, does that have anything to do with this, or is that purely based on socioeconomic data?
That's an SES piece, but what we do is, any of the Title I schools, they have supports in place, academic supports, to leverage and jumpstart any of our title students. So you see those results, and again, that's embedded in our, in our MTSS piece. We use those title funds to support some of that. So a lot of the, the interventions we do are grant-funded. But you'll see, we have a breakdown for ELA for grades three, four, and five, as well as math for grades three, four, and five. And there's really, you know, a lot of positive growth in, in areas, and I would, I would consider standard, you know, fluctuations in other areas. And then the last group of slides is our subgroups. And there's a race subgroup for both ELA and math. There's a gender subgroup for ELA and math, as well as, they call, they call it just the subgroup slides, and they kind of disaggregate them by elementary, middle, and high school.
Could you elaborate on the subgroups?
Yep.
What, what makes the subgroups?
So the subgroups, so the first one by race, they break out the, in this case, they take grades three through five in a subgroup. They categorize them together by race, and then they go across and report out the percentages in terms of everything from not meeting all the way up to advanced, exceeding or advanced proficient. And they do that down into middle school and high school. In terms of gender, they break it out by male and female, and then all students, which the all students number is something we've already seen in passing in some of the previous slides. And then the final slide breaks it out into ELL, free and reduced lunch, 504 students, special ed, and gen ed. So breaks them out into our demographics, our subgroups. And as we go through, we, we look for growth and we look for achievement embedded in our subgroups. And that's something, again, that's reported out on our school report card. The state has growth goals and things related to student achievement. But the subgroups, again, we go back to MTSS, we talk about our English language learners, we've heard all of the supports that we put in place with Dr. Rozell in our ELL three-year plan. When we talk about students, whether it's a 504, free and reduced lunch, we're talking about title programs. So we have embedded in our MTSS process, any students on this continuum that fall through the decision tree and are trigger some sort of Tier Two or Tier Three intervention, which could be a reading specialist, push-in, pull-out, basic skills, push-in, pull-out. Frequency could be two, three, five times a week, depending on their individualized goals. They're already being addressed, and there's a process in place if a student that didn't get caught on our, our district screener, there's a process for those students to filter up through a teacher recommendation piece, and we go over that in our curriculum committee meeting.
I know there's already a lot of data, but there is no state and district comparison for these subgroups because the subgroups could vary?
Correct.
For districts?
Yep.
Okay.
And then this last slide here is something I've been talking about as a thread throughout, but MTSS is really the backbone and the heart. And again, if you haven't seen the curriculum committee meeting, it was probably a 45-minute to an hour discussion on that, on that program as it evolves. And we were going to continue to revisit that as it grows. It's a living, breathing project, project that we go through. As our students' needs vary, our MTSS system will vary. It's at all grade levels. We have it all the way up through into the high school, specifically in grades nine and 10 this year. Some of the interventions, you've heard me talk about them. It's in-class basic skills, pull-out reading specialist. We have the math assistance and language assistance programs, as we call them at the, at the middle school. We have push-in support at the high school level. We use title funds to support a lot of this, our annual title fund allotment. The summer math boost is an example of some of the title funds that we use at the elementary level. And one of the tools we use, and we talked about this, besides Linkit as our data management house, MAP Growth, MAP is the tool we use as a frequent check-in with our students. It's a progress monitoring tool that we have. It's also our universal screener. That is the first screener for us to identify a student that may need support.
If I can just ask, and I don't want to elaborate on this too much right now, but I did, you know, hear that there was some pretty substantial, substantial cuts to special education, staff, personnel on like a federal level. Is that anything that's going to affect our funding and our intervention strategies? I know we can't predict the future, but anything for this year?
So the majority of, the vast majority of what we engage with here is from a state level, including our state funding. We get minimal federal funding. So in terms of support and staffing, a lot of the things we see from the federal government is an oversight piece. Civil date, civil rights data reporting is done by, surveyed by the federal government. So we report out on a bunch of information. It seems to be much more frequently than it used to be. Coming out of COVID, we used to do it every couple of years, and then it was every year for a couple of years. So I don't know what the impacts of that would be. I can't project with it. I haven't seen the specific roles or, that have been impacted, but that's something that we will certainly monitor guidance from the state, because my guess is they would, they would get some direct impact potentially in terms of who they're reporting to or what services or support they have. But we, you know, something we'll definitely keep an eye on. We, we keep an eye on everything at the state level, and we do monitor what happens at the federal level as well. Our next data piece here is the, called the Dynamic Learning Map, the DLM is what it's most commonly called. That is an assessment, it's an alternate assessment. So students that don't take NJSLA because they have an individualized education plan, some students go through and take a, engage in a DLM process. So this year, our reporting is that we have 45 students take it in the ELA, 45 students take it in math, and 18 students in science. And we know science is a different grade level. So it's five, eight, and 11. So that's why there's less students that take it, because it's relative to the student enrollment. So that's our reporting for our DLM. The next slide is the access testing. So this is ELL, ESL-related. So annually, our students in our ESL program take this assessment. The ESL program is a continuum. So when students enter, they're assessed, and they are at a certain level. And as they progress through, the goal is to eventually test out or move through and have minimal supports, ESL supports. So a 4.5 is the exit score. We have 188 students that took the access, 30 students earned the score, and 30 students were exited from the ESL program. Now, when we exit a student for the first time with the ESL program, we monitor them for an additional two years. If we see any regression, we pull them back in and ramp up the supports again. But what happens is some students progress faster through this, some students progress slower through it. It's totally a function of, are they fluent in English to begin with when they join us? Are they totally fluent and they just need some basic supports to kind of get the hang of things? It's, like I said, it's a continuum, and it's something we work through, and they take this annually. There's four parts to it, speaking, listening, reading, and writing. And then the last section here is our AP tests. So annually, we have students, and we provide them the opportunity to take advanced placement tests in a variety of courses. Now, we offer AP tests for the tests, for the courses that we offer AP classes in. Now, we offer AP tests for the tests, for the courses that we offer AP classes in. So we have everything in business and fine and performing arts. We have a cap, an AP capstone process. We have science tests, we're language tests. So notable for this year is we administered 1,904 exams. That's an increase from last year of 192 exams. We have 86% of our students taking the exams that earn a qualifying score, that's a three, four, or a five. That's up 2% from the previous year. 63% of the students earned a score of a four or a five, which is an increase of 2%. And then the next few slides, something to highlight, some of the courses have a very small number of students that take the assessments. So we have any class that has less than 10 students and/or any level that has less than 10 students in the, in their square as a less than 10. Because we don't want students to be individually identified in terms of where they fell on the continuum here. But again, you can see there's a wide range. Historically, some of the AP tests are harder than others. We, there are some courses that, you know, students going in know that these courses have a, you know, difficult reputation. But notably, you know, our micro, our macroeconomics class, we had 92% of our students with a qualifying, qualifying score, three, four, and five. 2D art and design, 100% of students had a qualifying exam, again, less than 10 students there, but that's extremely notable. English Lit and Comp, 100% of our students qualified, 100% got four or five. AP Research and AP Seminar, those are extremely rigorous courses. It's a sequence. When you take the research, you then commit to taking the seminar course, actually seminar, then you take the research. But the 96% research, 100% from the seminar had qualifying exam, qualifying scores, which is tremendous. Our world language numbers are small, so they're less than 10s, but we, we get very good performance in terms of qualifying exams. Calculus BC, 55 students took it, 100% had a qualifying, so three, four, or five. That's a testament to, you know, the rigor, rigorous flow of our math programs. Similarly, Calculus AB, 105 students took it, 98% got a qualifying exam, 95% got a four or a five. So Calc B, Calc BC are our most rigorous calculus courses, are essentially collegiate level calculus courses. And then we go through even US history, 98% of our students had a qualifying score. That's tremendous, tremendous.
I just wanted to ask a quick question. The world language component, on the, the list of the subjects, it has Italian and Spanish, but then the, with this page, thank you, has French and Italian?
Yep, French language, Italian language.
Okay.
Yep.
So is this, I guess, because French wasn't on that initial one and I, I didn't see Spanish as one of the windows. I just wasn't sure if that's also a part of it.
Yeah, I'll double check. I'll double check the, the AP piece. Yep.
Okay. And then we do also offer AP French as well because, okay. Yeah, this is, I mean, it's fantastic.
Yeah, our AP scores are, we did it, we did a, the teachers and the students did a tremendous job, you know, through our AP course sequence. Again, chemistry, 100% students had a qualifying score, 60% got a four or a five. Again, it's less than 10 students, but still impressive. And the last couple of slides here highlight, again, typical fluctuations and the same applies here as we have students, new students come through, right? We see a fluctuation of interest, why some courses may have more tests taken, less tests taken. It's all relative to our student body. But we saw a small increase from 86 to 88% in terms of students with qualifying score of a three or higher. One student, one thing that I didn't report is we had an additional 130 students taking exams. So not only did we have 192 extra exams, we had a, we were able to engage it an extra 130 students. So we're expanding access and even with expanded access, more students taking it, we're continuing to perform at a high level. And then the last slide is something that, we don't have the information for this year yet, but we put as a placeholder. The past few years, we've been recognized on the AP honor roll and we are awaiting, and what AP reported out is expect the information in January 2026. Last year, we were a silver school, which means our college culture, college credit and college optimization all either met silver or gold or platinum criteria or higher. And this is a reflection, and this information is specific to the graduating class. So this is the graduating class data.
Any questions? Mrs. Aziz?
Question. So a qual, a qualifying score is three, four, or five?
Correct.
Does that mean that the student get, gets college credit for three or they only get college credit for a four or five?
So college credit is defined by the university. It's not defined by College Board or even us. So the College Board defines a qualifying score as a three, four, and five. I would say the safe side of a college favoring giving credit is a four or a five, which is oftentimes why that's, we disaggregate that separately. Some colleges might view a three, a four, or five. It depends on the course or the university, but a four or five is more likely. But we use the term qualifying because that's what College Board disaggregates the data with.
I have another question. So some of these, you know, percentage of fours and fives are quite high.
Yep.
Some of them are pretty low, like, you know, Italian language and culture is 17%, you know? And then the computer science is 29, 35%. And some of them are like, you know, over, over 80%. So when, when something's a little lower, does the district take another look at the curriculum and think about ways to change it to increase the, you know, the pass rate? Or how is the curriculum for these AP courses evaluated?
Yep. So we take a look at curriculum documents on a cycle, but if there's, like I said, even out of the NJSLA data for like the elementary, middle, or high, traditional high school courses, if we see something out of whack, we will definitely take a look at, you know, is there a sequencing issue? Is there a timing issue? So the content's all there, but maybe we need to teach it earlier or later, right? Maybe we teach it a little later. So that's something, it's a constant kind of reflection we do. And then the other piece is, and, you know, we can certainly bring this as a topic to curriculum, but there are some courses, like the computer science course is an extreme, notoriously extremely difficult test. So we actually celebrate fours and fives, even they're, they're a lower percentage than a different exam. The fact that we're having students perform at that level is, you know, to be celebrated. So I think it depends on the course, depends on the rigor of the exam, but anything College Board related, our curriculum document is aligned with the College Board guidelines and/or sequences and suggested topics that they provide for basically uniformity throughout the, the country. If, if a student's taking AP CompSci, these are the expectations from College Board. We write our curriculum to align with those expectations and so does everybody else. So that way, everybody can take the same exam.
Yeah, well, one thing that occurred to me is that, you know, some of these AP courses have been offered here for decades. Like when I attended Monroe High School in the 90s, you know, we had AP Calculus, but we didn't have all these other AP classes. They were just not offered. And so I thought maybe part of the discrepancy is that if it's, if it's a class that's been offered for decades, then, you know, the district probably has a lot more experience teaching that AP class, whereas if it's an AP class that, you know, is a newer class, maybe they just don't have that, that level of experience with it. That, that was one thought. But I get, yeah, I think you're right. I think the AP, the computer science classes is known to be difficult.
Yeah, and that one always comes to the top of my head because we talk about it as a traditionally extremely challenging exam. And not that any of these are easy, not to even qualify that, but there are notoriously more difficult exams than others. And we celebrate even the small percentages specifically in those classes.
Sure. Dr. Lehman, if I can just follow up on what Mrs. Aziz had said, and I think you sort of touched on it, but is there any flexibility on the curriculum itself for the AP classes or is it more just like when topics are being handled?
We, we write the document for Monroe. We use their guidance as guidance, right? They have suggested resources, they have a sequence, a timeline, and some of the courses, they're more specific than others. They may give very specific test, texts to engage with. Sometimes they give specific languages that we have to, you know, computer science languages that we should be engaging the students in, that provides uniformity when they do assessments and things like that. So there is flexibility for us to write it in Monroe with Monroe's needs and Monroe's resources, but there is a framework that provides consistency. So no matter where you are, you're taking the same test and you should be getting the same background so you have the same opportunity as everybody else in the country.
And then I just had, I guess, one other question sort of about the, the numbers because I think honestly, as much as the increase in exams going hot, increasing is exciting to me, it's the fact that we have an extra 130 students even trying to take AP exams. Do we have a breakdown of, I guess, what grade levels the exams are taking place? Like is it, I'm sure it's more seniors than freshmen, but like are we sort of monitoring like when they're freshmen, sophomores, juniors, like how many exams? Because I'm sure like of the extras, the 2,000 exams, you know, a lot of the students might only be taking one exam and some might be taking four or five, so.
Students take exams in the year they take the course. Or in some cases, there's a self-study and they would take it in the year that they would take the course, even though they may have self-studied for it. So it's, so the, in terms of course sequencing, if it's an 11th and 12th grade class, and we do, and we, they enroll, they're actually in the process of signing up for AP exams for the spring right now. So we do have the breakdown of how many juniors, seniors, and that's actually reported out because that's used for that, the last slide of the, the honor roll, right? Because they look at just the senior class to develop that slide.
Any other questions for Dr. Lehman?
I do, yes. Real quick. So the last slide, if I remember correctly, the, the college culture that we got a silver rating for, that did tie into the number of seniors taking the classes?
Yeah, I'll read you the exact criteria. It says, percentage of students in the graduating class who took an AP exam at any point in high school.
So if that percentage shifted this year, we could be looking at a?
Right, because the other two were gold.
Okay.
Yep.
The other two were gold.
Yep.
One last question that I had. In the background, are we observing when there's one AP class being taught by multiple teachers and one class has a better outcome than the others? Are we then doing knowledge transfer between the teachers to allow for parity? Because teach, the kids don't get to choose what teacher they will get for that class. But if the outcome of one, one teacher is consistently better than the others, then there is this?
Yeah, and that's something the, the district supervisors maintain a very close eye on in terms of who's teaching and then if there's multiple teachers, you know, ensuring they get comparable experiences so that they have an equal opportunity in terms of the outcome in the spring. Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Lehman. I would ask that if you want to get more information about our curriculum system, listen to the curriculum meeting this past, last week. It was an hour and a half filled with information from all the directors and, and everybody, I think the four ladies over here, Ms. Ruela was over here, and we had some gentlemen over there. It was like an A-team, A-plus team, I thought. They were fantastic. So please take a little time out and be more informed by listening to our curriculum meeting from last week. I was well informed, so, thank you.
Mr. Payne, can I make an ask? So the MTSS presentation that we saw during the curriculum meeting, is that going to be, or could that be put up on our website in the board information area?
I can't see why.
There's a lot, there's a lot that we're talking about that a visual helps a lot with, when the community is looking at. And I also want to add the genesis has, if, if you were looking at your child's performance, the MAP score all the way from elementary grades to high school, you can see your own child's progress. So it kind of ties into the whole MTSS and all the different testing and the Linkit data that they're using. You can see your own child's progress all the way up from elementary to high school if your child has reached that age. So it's, that data exists for parents to look anytime they want to. Thank you.
Dr. Lehman, will this also be on the website, the presentation?
Yep, 100%. This presentation will be up on the website for public view. And again, this, all this information gets shared in our school report card as well with a bunch of extra information as well.
Thank you again, Dr. Lehman.
Yep, so I'm going to go through with my?
Now your acting superintendent report?
Yeah, well, I'm going to go through with my recommendations here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. So Personnel 10 member, it's recommended that the board approve the attached Personnel Items A through W.
Motion?
Second.
For a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question. I don't know if this is the appropriate time. It's about the enrollment. Right, is that okay to ask now? It's under superintendent's report.
Yep.
Okay. I noticed we have the enrollment numbers for our in-district schools in September, but we don't have for our out-of-district schools in September. Do you know if we'll be getting that next month?
Yep.
Okay, that's it.
I just had a quick question. The, um, there's a, I see, I see that there's a girls wrestling chaperone on here, which I think is fantastic that we have girls that are wrestling. I just wanted to know, is that chaperone just like with them? Because I, I did see it was a, a male staff member, so are they're not?
It's just a supervisory piece. It, we're required to have, we have, we do something similar with gymnastics. We don't have a team, but we have a couple of students that participate. So we're required to send a staff member to be on site when the students are participating in the, either it's gymnastics. And this year, we're going to do it for girls wrestling.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Payne, I just had a comment too on the enrollment. Just wanted to highlight to the public that this year, the enrollment numbers are 341 students less than last year in September. We've been talking in vague numbers that we are expecting lower enrollment this year. We are now looking at that number and it's, uniform district-wide, all schools have seen a reduction in enrollment.
Anything else for discussion? We take a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Personnel nine-member vote. It's recommend, it's recommended that the board approve Personnel Items X through BA.
Motion? Second. Any discussion?
Just a comment. I am, just wanted to give my regards to Mrs. McHugh, the first retirement on the resignation retirement on the agenda. She holds a special heart, place in my heart and she will be most dearly.
Any other discussion on this? Roll call, Ms. Allen?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes. Yes, sorry.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Um, yes, I just need to recuse on AJ for Ms. Francis and AW number one for Ms. Guerrero.
Okay. Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Board Action 10-member vote. It's recommended that the board approve the attached Board Items A through N. A through N.
Motion? Is there a second? Mr. Tufano, did you second? Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Will you? I think Ms. Bora, oh, well, it was between the two, he was going, yeah. No, you had made the motion, Mr. Tufano did too. So one of you, you know, doesn't matter.
I second it.
Okay, he seconded it.
All right, I had a question for Dr. Lehman. Item N, the self-assessment on the HIV report. Is this consistent with previous years? Are we seeing any changes?
It's actually increasing a few of the schools. They go through a self-assessment rubric. They do it at the end of the school year, then they revisit it in September, early October. And we traditionally approve it this month. And Dr. Cernansky led the HIV specialists through the process and everything is very consistent, even a little higher in terms of a higher self-assessment, right? A better score.
Okay. And does this then go to the DOE and get their approval or?
Yes, it's basically, we send it to them and then basically in the springtime, we get it back, the same thing we sent back that says, you're good to go.
That's what we see on our district as a record, where it's come back.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Alvarez?
Roll call, I'm sorry.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Puro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Um, yes, I just need to recuse on the PD for Mr. Snyder.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So under Board Action 9-member vote, it's recommended that the board approve the attached Board Action items O through U. O through U.
Motion.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Roll call, Ms. Allen?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Puro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter P for Mr. Ratner and then just recuse on letter S.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So just real briefly, I attended the, I was able to attend the Monroe Tatchip High School Band Home Show this weekend, this past weekend. Outstanding job. If we were scored, I'm thinking we would have won, but as the host school, you don't get scored, you don't get, you don't get to participate in your own competition, so congratulations to the other winners, but our band definitely did an amazing job. We are traveling to South Brunswick this weekend, I believe, and we will be able to compete and hopefully come back with, oh, East Brunswick. You know, definitely one of the trophies, so, great job.
Okay. It is recommended that Board Action items A through K be approved by consent roll call under 10-member vote.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just have two, first, I just wanted to acknowledge our sponsor, Monroe Orthodontics, for their partnership with us. And then I did just want to ask about letter J, which is a donation of $50 from Donors Choose. I think it's wonderful, any donations we can get, but I know we've had that discussion several times. Are we allowing that now? And if so, can we make that, I guess, a discussion so that if other teachers would like to take advantage of this, they can do so?
So if you're asking me, the origin of this, it's most likely on the unique side of things, so if we're looking at, and this is a bigger discussion, but if we're looking at opening this up, it's Pandora's Box and we're going to, we're going to be probably having hundreds of these approvals to, you know, go through this process. I think we talked about potentially exploring that avenue, but we definitely have more formal ways to donate and support the schools. And this is definitely, from my perspective, it's convenient and it's easy, but it's right on the line for me in terms of us being able to monitor and really keep a good track of what's coming into the district, what is, everything from technology to cash deposits and things like that. So it's definitely a big discussion. You know, I would recommend approving this.
Right.
But I would not broadcast to say this is, you know, the Wild West right now.
No, no, that wasn't my intent. It was more like if we can set up perhaps, and maybe in finance, that would be a good place to look, to see like if we would like to maybe explore expanding this, but while still making sure we're not opening up, like you said, Pandora's Box, just to sort of make sure like the avenues, if someone else is able to take advantage of this, like it's approval of donations or something like that, just because it is a great way to fund the classrooms, but I like, I know we've had this discussion where we don't really know what potentially is being funded.
And Ms. DePayne, if I could add to that?
Yes, please.
So I also had that question. I want to prelude that by saying that any donation is welcome. We do need the donation, but I do want to, it's, this item says that this fund is going to be used for such essential classroom items at Oak Tree Elementary. So I, I think we should, like, as per your advice, we approve this tonight, but we do want to bring this up in the next Finance Committee meeting because any essential supplies have to be part of our operating budget. We get donations, we can decide how, there needs to be equity, so we can't have one side of the town, parents choosing to support one school through Donors Choose, and then it's an essential supply, so that, you know, that, it's just, it's like you said, opening a Pandora's Box. So if we want to start something like this, we just have to be equitable. So maybe we find a way to look into this as a board and for future donations, we ask them to donate directly to the district, not use a tool. If we can, till we've had that discussion through committees and, you know, pass a resolution as a board, we should refrain from allowing use of any tool that has, that has been up for conversations in the past. Like, I, I don't want to stop donations. I think we can encourage parents to direct, we've had people directly donate money, so just directly write a check to the school district. But we definitely want to look at this procedurally before we do any further. Thank you.
Yes, okay.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Usually I don't have elementary things on the 10-member vote, so is this, should I go down?
Ah.
Good question.
It's-
Okay.
Want us to move it, like make a motion to move it, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, she could just abstain.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, to all abstain on all the checks for Methfessel and Wesler. Did I say that right?
Werble.
Oh, yeah. Hold on, you had it here. Okay, Methfessel and Werble. Yes, to all except for one check on the bill list, which is item B. The check number is 10908. I would like to recuse on that particular check and yes to everything else.
Yes, to all.
Okay. Dr. Peck?
Yes, except abstain on J.
Okay. Mr. Puro?
Yes, but I need to recuse on checks numbers 10448 and 10516.
Um, yes, to all. I need to recuse on the bill list for C-09947 and C-09945. They're not, I think only one of them was on there. The other one-
They're not on the other one, I'm sorry.
It's, then there's the addendum. So I have C-10516, C-10590, C-10448, C-10437, and then C-11037.
Okay, before the 11037, you said what?
Um, 10437. I believe it was for an administrator. I can check if you want.
So, let me just see which ones. Um. I think I got that wrong. Okay.
Uh, yes, to all, but I'm going to abstain for check number 10448 and check number 10516.
10448 and 10516?
Correct, yes.
Yes, to all.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes, to all, but I'm going to abstain on check number 10448 and 10516. And on your bill list, where my, a member of my family, I think, worked a half a day in this bill listing, excuse me? Wherever it is located on here, she told me she did work in the district, so I'm going to recuse on her.
Okay.
I don't want to.
So for Methfessel and Werble, we had, we had one abstention there, one. So we had five recusals, I believe. Just want to double-check. 105 is not. We had five yeses and five nos. So it did not, or, I'm sorry, abstention, so it did not pass. Correct. For the, for the Methfessel-
10516 and 10510.
10, okay, 10516. Three, four. Okay, so 10516, there were four abstentions. So that one passed. The 10590? 10448? Well, it's kind of, yeah, I think it made it better to make a chart, because that's all I have left. Because there's three checks, but I think if we just look at those three checks, the numbers, so 10448.
One at a time?
Yeah, you know what, let's do that. 10448.
Okay. So you want to roll call on?
Yes. Okay, so Ms. Alvarez?
So this is roll call?
This is for 10448, for David Rubin?
Okay, uh, yes.
Yes, okay. Ms. Aziz?
This is for David Rubin.
Um, yes.
Yes, okay. Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Puro?
I have three cues.
Ms. Ratner?
I need to recuse due to conflict.
Ms. Sharma?
Abstain.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
And Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Yes, so that passes. 10448 passes, there were three abstentions and recusals. So that's good. So on, 10516, Ms. Alvarez?
Yeah, uh, sorry, I abstained on both of those.
10516.
Oh, Methfessel and Wer-, yeah, both.
And 10590. Ms. Aziz?
Um, I, on the bill list, I vote yes to all except for check 10908.
Okay, so you're, you're yes. Okay. Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Yes. Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Puro?
I have three cues on that 10516.
Just the 10516?
And the other one. Because it's the same firm.
Excuse me?
It's the same firm, so you should do both.
Oh, and 10590?
Both of them, okay.
Oh, I see, it's the same attorney representing both of them.
Okay. Ms. Ratner?
I'm going to recuse due to conflict on both of those as well.
Okay. Ms. Sharma?
I abstained. 10516, yes.
On both? Both of them, okay. Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
To both?
Yes, to both.
Okay, so one, two, three. So for five, 10516, we have four abstentions, so that passed. One, two, three, four, five. And same thing for 10590, it passed, there were only four recusals and abstentions. It's, they all passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez.
That was a lot to keep track of.
That was a lot, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, under a nine-member vote, it is recommended that Board Action items L through M be approved by consent roll call.
Motion.
Second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Um, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Puro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez, for all that you did there. Board President's Report. I too, Dr. Lehman, attended the band competition on Saturday night. I was babysitting. My grandchildren had off Monday in Howell for Columbus Day and my daughter was away. And I had a wonderful mother-granddaughter evening when I took her and, to the band festival, she's never been, and Mr. Schneider came up to her and talked to her, Ms. Ratner came up and talked to her, people in the, in the audience behind me that knew me. Actually, she knew somebody, now she's five, in the fifth grade. Her dad's friends go here in the eighth and ninth graders, and the lady sitting behind us heard it, and she said, "Oh, my son played baseball with them." So my granddaughter had the most wonderful time. Dr. Lehman, you're exactly right. Monroe's band was phenomenal. I could sit there all night and listen to them and watch them perform on a, on the field and during the game. I mean, they were exquisite. East Brunswick was very good. I wasn't there for the smaller bands because we had to take all the grandchildren out to eat, but I was there for the bigger bands, and each one of them was better than the next, but I, who won, East Brunswick, do you remember? Yeah, they were really good too.
Bridgewater, maybe?
Maybe Bridgewater, I can't, they were all very good. So that was a wonderful grandmother, granddaughter evening for me. And one more thing, Monday, October 20th, is Diwali, and I want to wish everyone who celebrates Diwali to have a wonderful celebration of your holiday. Now we'll go to the public forum. Other board business. I'm sorry, I missed that. I was so excited about being with my granddaughter by herself. She has a little brother who's six years old and she doesn't get away from him that often. So, yes, Ms. Bora, did you want to say something?
In the other board business.
Okay, other board business, please.
I just remembered, we have a motion on the table from the previous board meeting. So here I am again, putting it back up. I would like to make a motion, or I don't know how to say it again, if it was tabled, just bring it back up to reinstate Dr. Chanley immediately.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Roll call, Ms. Allen?
Yes, Ms. Alvarez?
No.
Ms. Aziz?
No.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Puro?
No.
Ms. Ratner?
Recuse due to conflict.
Ms. Sharma?
No.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
No.
Ms. DePain?
No.
Motion does not pass.
And Ms. DePain, if I may also.
Yes, please.
Wish everybody a very happy, prosperous Diwali, also to our board member, Ms. Sharma.
Thank you.
And all of our student demographic and parents out there that are celebrating this festival. May it bring a lot of joy and light in your lives, thank you.
I just want to say something, one minute. Our student representative has been here all evening. And I appreciate you staying and listening to the meeting and giving up your time to be here with us tonight. So besides your presentation, thanks for hanging around. I'm sure you're learning a lot, sitting here with us this evening. Well, if you'd like to say something right now, we have, you're part of us, is there something you'd like to say?
I just want everyone to have a very good Diwali. I celebrate it myself, it's a big event, especially for those who celebrate it.
Thank you, okay, thank you very much. Ms. Ratner?
Okay, so really quick, most people touched on it, but the MEF Tricky Try, I also attended. It was fantastic, especially for their first time, they did a great job. I was told they raised a very significant amount of money in that event. So thank you to everyone who came out to support. I did win something, but, you know.
I know you did.
Not the grand prize, so, you know, that's next year's goal. I also, it was, attended the Green Fair as well as the Booster Club Car Show. And I wanted to say that both of those were fantastic events. Really cool cars, there was like, was like a hundred-year-old car, I don't. I don't know enough about cars to say much more than that, but it was very cool. And then the Green Fair, it was really nice seeing our community members, both young and old, there, sharing some things that they're passionate about regarding that. I went to the Diwali Festival held by the township, I saw Ms. Sharma there. It was fantastic, I brought my third grader, who, you know, I think one thing that's really great about our community, and I know, like, I've spoken, Ms. Bora and I have spoken at length about our religions, and I've learned a lot about traditions, and I know, like, we've done back and forth. It's great to learn about all of these other traditions that each of us celebrates and sort of celebrate our differences, learn about each other's cultures. And I know that we do that with our students in the schools, and I think that the more we continue to do that as a community, the better. I was also at the Marching Band Home Show. I'm a little bit biased, given that my daughter's in the marching band, but I also, you know, would agree with what everyone said, although my daughter is in a battle with the witch in the marching band show at the end and then gets stabbed in the show. You have to see it, so that's sort of my suggestion in order to understand what I'm saying. But I would, you know, it's performed at the football games as well as at, you know, marching band competitions. Definitely try to come out and support our students. I will say, having gone to a couple of our football games, there's great attendance there. One thing that I've been trying to help out with, and I know, I don't know if Mr. Verandico is still here, I think I saw him earlier, the snack bar. It tends to be a smaller group of volunteers trying to service hundreds and hundreds of people. So if you're part of that group that's there that night, definitely try to come out. If you're someone who just wants to help out, obviously, you know, reach out, because obviously the more people that are helping, the faster those lines will go. Some of those kids are really hungry and want their food, so definitely, you know, try to be there. The other thing I just wanted to mention really quick, I know that there are a few of us going to the New Jersey School Boards Workshop next week. And I think that's always a fantastic way for us to learn about a lot of the things that we can bring back to our district. You know, I know the bus app and the Portrait of a Graduate, things like that. Like, there's a number of things that we've gotten from that workshop that we've been able to then bring back, esports, right? So my suggestion for those board members who are going, myself included, maybe just we can try to ensure that we are covering our grounds with the different sessions, so that if there's something that we see that might be interesting for our district, to make sure we have somebody going to those. And I want to just wish everybody a happy Diwali, as well as for the kids, enjoy Halloween, because that's coming up, too, don't eat too much candy, and thank you all.
Anything else from board members? Okay, now we're going to go to the public forum. Anyone from the public who wishes to come up and speak, please do so. State your name, your address, and you have four minutes to address the board.
Good afternoon, board members and esteemed representatives. My name is Christian Backoff, I'm a resident of Monroe Township, and I live at 2 Dartmouth Avenue in New Jersey, in Monroe. To preface, I'd like to applaud the board for their great work, their diligent work on this dais, about, you know, the situations and the, you know, academic proficiency that you guys are addressing, specifically on, you know, procuring the information, procuring the data, and providing that comprehensive transparency to not only the public, but also being able to elucidate and explain it clearly to everybody, so they understand. But I've come to you today to address a serious and pertinent issue regarding the sanitation of our schools and bathrooms specifically. To preface, for a little over a year, many students in the high school have been reporting and noticing a lack of soap, specifically that of, in the men's room. I've confirmed with several teachers regarding the matter, all which stated that is, that there is a direct, they will direct my concern to the administration via the proper channels and proper means through emails, which is apparently the protocol. Teachers regularly see me at the bathroom, the people that are, the faculty that are supposed to be instructed as the people that are reviewing and acting as the people that scan and scan out, the facilitators. They regularly inform me that they've contacted administration, that they're informing me of the impending situation, this, that, the other thing, that's fine. The Monroe Township School District instills the mission of excellence in their expectations. The question will remain, shouldn't maintaining bathrooms and bathroom facilities count as, you know, maintaining that excellence? And in my opinion, in my view, that would be an emphatic yes. Days later, the issue still persisted. I proceeded to talk to the teacher that I addressed the issue on, and in turn, the teacher proceeded to say once more that she'll email the administration regarding the issue. I continued to inquire further and ask teachers further on the issue, though noticing nothing really transpired from it. We allocate 8.35% of our fiscal budget, of $159 million, towards utilities and facilities. You know, we have that money, we have those appropriations, and, you know, pursuant to the provisions of Title 8, Paragraph 26, Section 6, Subsection 4, Clause B, Subclause 4, it prescribes, "Soap dispenser shall be," quote, "soap dispenser shall be provided in each bathroom and shall be supplied with an adequate supply of soap. The soap dispenser shall be made of all metal or all plastic materials, glass shall not be permitted in soap dispensers," unquote. So my point of contention here is that, you know, I feel that it's fundamentally imperative that we begin to, you know, somewhat address this concern of bringing back soap and sanitation in our facilities, specifically that in the school bathrooms now. Ultimately, yeah, again, it's a priority, it should be a priority in our high school, not only for a practice of health, but also to make a more conducive environment to learning, you know, and practice prefacing for the workplaces well, because workplaces, obviously, stress the vital component of health, safety, and sanitation. I feel like if we, you know, begin to replicate that and bolster that within the school, that it will not only help us as students become more conducive, but also the faculty and staff that have also had qualms with this lack of soap and lack of general sanitation supplies. Thank you very much, I do apologize for the, you know, sporadic change of, you know, events, it wasn't really germane to the meeting itself on academic performance, but it is a pertinent issue that needs to be addressed, thank you very much.
You better get this guy soap.
Thank you.
No soap.
Thank you for your comments. You don't have to apologize, we, we are here to listen to everything that the community, and you are part of the community, has to say and give us. So I don't know if that's BGT, Mr. Tags with Buildings and Facilities, or?
So, Christian, thank you for coming.
Can I ask you a question? Are there dispensers in the bathroom, or are the dispensers gone? Because I have a feeling the dispensers aren't there, and that's why there's no soap.
So yes, there are dispensers in the bathrooms, but they're pretty much inoperable, and some of the other dispensers are actually broken, they're actually molding. And when you actually click on the, yeah, well, I have a lot of people that can attest to this, and, you know, we have some other related, you know, evidence. But the fact of the matter is, they're inoperable, they're very moldy, and when we use them, you know, they pretty much, you know, nothing really comes out besides, well, it's very discolored, let's just say.
Okay, so noted, thank you very much for expressing that.
Thank you very much for your open and willingness to, openness and willingness to.
I think that's something that we can address for you and for the rest of the students.
Thank you very much.
Especially with the cold and flu season coming up, and I think it's a necessity that we take care of that.
I can.
So thank you very much for your comments.
Even subsequent to COVID, you know, it's still, you know, we got to combat, you know, sanitation.
Christian, thank you for coming. The, I know for a fact the building principal is watching the meeting tonight, so whether, whether the message got to him before this, or this is the first he's hearing of it, he knows of it now, and certainly can engage in addressing the situation and looking into it.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you, Christian. Anytime, Christian, anytime you have a concern. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak tonight? Yes.
Vanessa Forrest, and I live in Monroe Township. First, I would like to convey my sincere condolences to Rashni Shaw and her family. I pray that Rashni and her family find peace. I know that the pain never goes away. I was around 30 when my mother passed, and my dad passed just over 10 years ago. But I believe my parents are always with me. So I live in a way that I will never do or say anything that I think will disappoint my parents or embarrass my children or grandchildren. I learned from my parents that making someone else look bad never makes you look better. These are lessons that I have tried to live by and be an example of. Anyone who knows me knows that to be true. Most current residents of this area were not around in the 70s. The account I gave was true. And anyone living in the Berg at that time knows that my statements were true. I spoke at the podium about my experience as a child having to deal with racism. But that was not to gain any sympathy. I spoke because I understood the experience and fear the children were feeling that was caused by the statements made by the prior representative of the Jamesburg Board of Education. My parents also taught me not to give away my power by allowing someone else's words or actions affecting how I treat others. I've been known to say, just because someone is an a-hole to you does not mean you need to be an a-hole back. That being said, there have been some horrible things said about someone I have known almost my entire life. Rebecca has used her own money, yes, her own money, to support my campaign because she believes in me. No one should be attacked, be attacking her and using the loss of her grandson to cause her and her family pain. They already feel unbearable pain. The revictimization of this family by a prior board member and a current board member is unconscionable. You know who you are. Rebecca knows I am honest and truly care about always doing what is right for the children, all children. I am happy that the Monroe Township Board of Ed is showing that it can function in a responsible, civilized manner and not be influenced by any bad apples. I want to commend Dr. Lehman and all who are doing the work to advance the implementation of full-day kindergarten. Finally, steps are being taken to move forward. It seems like this is a solid plan in place. I want to do the work as a member of the Board of Ed and return to the days when the residents of Monroe were confident the decisions were made for the right reasons and policies applied to everyone. Teachers and staff do deserve to receive salary increases. Salaries offered during the hiring process and any salary increases for teachers and staff should be provided according to set standard. There needs to be transparency and consistency when creating the annual budget. It is not fiscally responsible to provide the superintendent with a raise and a contract extension shortly after forcing the teachers and staff to accept a reduction to their benefits, while at the same time asking the taxpayers to increase their school taxes above the cap. I realize tough decisions need to be made, but I'm not sure that any of that made any sense. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to be heard this evening? Yes, sir.
Dominic Torito, my children go to school here, I live in Brooklyn, New York. I want to know, we're talking about Diwali, we're talking about all these cultural things, why did these children go to school on Columbus Day? Whose decision was it? Because quite frankly, it's un-American, and as an Italian-American, it's, it's, it's a discrimination. I know that you'll all just sit here in silence, because that's what you do whenever there's a public comment, because no one ever has any answers. But quite frankly, it's un-American that banks are closed, everything is closed. I work at a college, we were closed, everything is closed on Columbus Day. What happened? What happened here? Should we get rid of Diwali? Should they go to school then? No, of course not. How about Rashna Shawna? No? What do we get rid of next? Thanksgiving? What is it? Does anyone have an answer?
I wasn't here on the board when they got rid of Columbus Day. I was on another board when they took Columbus Day away. And my husband's Italian, and the town I lived in was very, very Italian. And I got umpteen phone calls yelling and screaming at me because we took it away in the town. Sometimes days have to be taken away in order to put other things into the school calendar. I don't know why, Dr. Lehman, it was taken away here, and when. I understand.
This is, this is the first year that my children are going to the school district.
Oh, okay.
So it's the first I've been aware of it.
Well, my grandchildren in Howell had it off.
Yeah, everybody had it off.
No, my grandson in East Brunswick did not.
Most schools have it off, every year, since 1972.
Well, and my daughter in New Brunswick didn't have it off.
So I don't know if Italians, Italian-Americans are now, you know, white or American enough that we get, like, faded off. I don't know how that goes, but it's unbelievable. You should all be ashamed. Christopher Columbus discovered America, and then Italian-Americans did more for this country that we all enjoy, because if it wasn't for Italian-Americans in World War II, this meeting would be conducted in German, because we were the largest minority group represented in the American forces.
We have our student rep that would like to make a comment to you, sir?
Yeah, so that day, we, for high schoolers, had PSAT, which is a big event, because College Board has to get the scores back by a certain time. And that took place for freshmen for the first time, so I feel like that's a pretty big deal when you relate that to, like, having off, and it's like something.
So the whole state had to do that on Columbus Day?
No, but we have to.
But just Monroe?
Yeah, we had it scheduled for that time, so I think that's like an important thing to get.
Right, but, I mean, that's not your fault as a student, that's whoever planned it decided that Columbus Day was not important enough to observe.
So the calendar development is a yearly process, we look at every day, every year.
I'm surprised that the teachers' union actually went for this. I, I mean, they love their days off, so.
So we, we involve everyone from the Administrative Association, Teachers Association, they take a look at the calendar before we present it to the Board of Education. But we start with a fresh look every year. And some years, we add specific holidays, some years, depending on when we start, we have to be a little tighter on some things we recognize. So to give you an exact, like, start date when Columbus Day was given off, I don't have that off the top of my head, we could probably look back a few years, solid. It's been a few years, for sure. And there are years sometimes when we're off. So I remember being principal at Woodland and having someone very similar with a reaction to you.
Okay, so not you, but it is all of your fault, or your predecessors, or something that.
But again, it's something we look at every year. So your feedback is heard, but the feedback from the community in general is heard as well.
I understood that I was going to stand here and just get stared at blankly, because every time I've been up here to talk to this dais, that's how it goes.
Sir, your four minutes are up also.
That's how it goes, exactly.
That's, that's the rules. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak tonight before the board? Okay, the next scheduled board meeting is October 15th, here in the media center at the high school.
No, November, right? November.
Oh, my gosh, November 19th, today's October 15th, isn't it?
Yes.
Thank you, I've been babysitting too much.
Motion to adjourn?
No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nobody wants to adjourn?